People wearing mugs, I don't have to. I mind if other people are wearing mugs, I don't have to.
It doesn't matter to me. I don't like some of the looks I get for not wearing one. You ever feel like somebody looks mean that you should not wear it on?
Yeah, a little bit, but it doesn't really bother me too much.
No, it doesn't?
I call the regular board of the county commissioners meeting on Monday, November 23rd, 2020, six o'clock to order. So always start our application and ask Commissioner Morris to be the lead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Join me if you like. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of freedom and the ability to get together here and do the government's business for the people. We ask that you give us wisdom to make the right decisions for the constituents that we represent. We ask that you bless those that need healing. We ask that you bless those that are deployed around the world looking after our freedom and our security as we meet here tonight. These things, God, we ask in your most gracious name and Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please continue standing for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going after the approval of the agenda. Pushing to approve.
Thank you.
He called a second there.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Langford, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll move on to our comments from our commissioner and manager, starting with, or start with Commissioner, and then how this time will go around this way.
That was good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd say welcome to everyone that's here tonight. Thank you for coming out. For everybody that is watching us on YouTube live streaming, I say thank you for watching us and part of the governmental process also. To me, that's one of the most important freedoms that you have, and that is to be able to come out and be a part of this. And if you need to express your concerns about a situation, you have that freedom. I think that's very important to everyone in America. I want to say two things. One is we missed, I missed the other day when we had a meeting saying to all the veterans, happy veterans day. I think sometimes we forget how important our veterans are. I had two sons that served in the military, and one of them actually served two stints in Afghanistan. They were blessed by the good Lord to come back home safely. But to me, to all the veterans that are watching YouTube or here tonight, I say thank you for your service. And the other thing is, is I know most of you have not ever seen me in one of these meetings with a mask on until tonight. My wife's had physical recently and her blood pressure was 260 over 130. So her doctor has told her that I am just going on until they can get that blood pressure under control, that I should not be out in a group meeting like this without a mask on, to make sure I don't bring the COVID home to her. So this is, everybody knows we knows I'm not much on wearing a mask. I haven't worn a mask in one of my meetings since our gracious governor made his decree. But I'm wearing one tonight for the safety of my wife, and I want everybody that's here tonight to know that. Keep bringing your prayers in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morris?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to welcome everybody that's here tonight, and also those that might be looking in on the internet, and to wish all the county employees and all our citizens and all you folks and everybody that we know a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. I have to say, this is the most masked I've seen since this all started back early this year. There are a number of meetings where no one wore a mask. So, I'm sorry?
The sign's there.
Okay. It was moved. It was hanging on the side of the table there. Now it's moved over, so even if you're going up the stairs, it catches us. But I am hearing of more people having some really sad circumstances involving the virus. And I'm wondering if there's a new strain coming on, coming around. Because when the virus first appeared, a lot of people had little or no symptoms. Well, a lot of people had it and didn't know they'd even had it. And now I'm hearing of more people who are in serious situations because of the virus. Anyway, Commissioner Menonong, Commissioner Morris mentioned Thanksgiving and welcoming people, both the ones that are here with us and those that are watching over the streaming. And I want to add my welcome to theirs. And I'd like to take a minute or two. This is my last regular meeting. And I've had 16 years serving the people of Stokes County as Commissioner. And I've tried consistently through all those years to put the people of the county first. I've challenged people on various occasions. If they ever found me doing anything other than what was in the best interest of the people in our county to the greatest extent possible, I wanted them to let me know what it was and how I might have handled the situation better if needed to better serve the needs of our people. Because I've tried for the 16 years I've been a commissioner to always use that as my gold standard, what's best for the people in our county, and really best for the people in the area to whatever extent possible, any that might be affected by our decisions. Also, I've tried to do certain things along. I've always supported law enforcement. Our sheriff and his deputies have a very challenging job. They're at risk in ways that I could only imagine at times. But they've served the people well, and have always tried to see that they were well-equipped and to whatever extent our budget would allow their salaries were adequate and appropriate to meet whatever the needs of their job is, and always felt like law enforcement, or law enforcement people should be making more. Unfortunately, they do. On the front end, they make not very much. But I have a couple of fishing buddies who are retired police officers. And to the best of my understanding, their retirement and investments were so good, they both became millionaires. So if a person can hang in there long enough and invest well, on the backside, they usually did pretty well. I've supported economic development. Wake up, Will. I've tried to support steadfastly and consistently economic development here in our county. And all the classes I've been to, all the people I've talked to, even some lady, Will referred to me, or referred me to her, and she and I agreed very quickly, our best shot at economic development is retention and expansion of our current businesses and entrepreneurship. And for that to happen, we need certain things. We need good internet, for example. We've tried very hard to have good internet here in our county. We went a long ways with River Street, and I think some things are still happening there. Other doors have opened, Stokes Wi-Fi, maybe even another option or so. That need is still there. And folks, if you don't believe it, look at these students that are struggling because of little or no internet. I personally know some of them. I have family members who are adversely affected because our internet's not working good. That's not fair. Everybody, we need a level playing field. We don't need people handicapped and trying to get their schoolwork done because they don't have adequate internet. So there's still a need there. I've always supported our health departments, social services, EMS, and other departments, county staff. And I hope that the folks following me, who follow me, Sonia and others, Ronnie, he's got another term coming up, it looks like, I hope they'll follow those same patterns, that they'll kind of keep in mind some of these same things. I'm not going to keep going down the list. I may cover a little bit more of it later, but I know, Commissioner looking at me, and rolling his eyes at me a little bit. He likes short meetings. And he might know some things, too, because he and I are both going out at the same time. A lot of stuff there, Mr. Chairman, and maybe say a little bit more at a later time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank everybody for being out here tonight and going with us to the business. I do want to make one little announcement real quick. There's been some complaints on the health department. I'm not sure if any of the commissioners have reached out to them to see what all is going on. But there, and I'm sure Commissioner Walker, and Commissioner Langford, and Commissioner Morris, and Commissioner Menonong could all tell you, that's a pretty busy department on top of what this whole COVID thing has brought to us. These gals are trying their best to get people tested as they come in. And they've received complaints, and I've kind of looked over some things. So in the past two pay period, you've got eight women who has had 501 hours overtime trying to keep things caught up. That's a lot, considering they don't get comp time and some get paid overtime. So I mean, it's, I see what their struggles are going through right now, and I know some people out in the county are getting frustrated because they've been asked, you know, it's going to be probably two days before they get tested, or maybe go to CVS, or maybe to Mountain Dew Medical. Be patient with these guys. They're doing as much as they can, as fast as they can, and being sure that they're being safe with it and trying to follow guidelines. But that's all I wanted to bring up tonight. Besides that, as the other commissioner said before, I hope you have a great Thanksgiving with your family. I know I'm looking for some of the downtime myself, and I'll pass it along to Commissioner Langford.
Thank you. Again, it's good to see just no more people out here at our meeting tonight. I'll have to, ditto what Commissioner Walker said, is we have served a lot of that time together, and I feel like that the Lord's blessed me by having a role in the community and placing emphasis on, I hope what is best for the community and for Stokes County. So I am very pleased the way things has went and is going at this time. And I know that our administration is, had a hard time keeping everything together, but they've done a super job, and I just want to thank him for that. And it's just, it's good to know that we've got a community like Stokes County that will band together when the need's there and bring, it brings the best out of them when we have problems that we've got to solve. It just brings the best out of them. I'd like to say that I just appreciate the opportunity to be a decision-maker and thank the good Lord for allowing me to make the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, we had one thing, and this is quick, if you'll allow me, please. I forgot to mention that I've always tried to support our schools as well. We have some school folks with us here this evening, and I've always placed a very high priority on the funding and other ways we can support our schools, and I just wanted to mention that, kind of add to my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. And thank you for that. Mr. Oakley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Board members, everyone here, everyone that is viewing through video, I wish you all a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families, and try to have a time that is more related to not what we're going through in the public environment today, so share each other's company and enjoy them. You two got one more meeting, right?
Well, depends. We have that organizational meeting in December, and I think we have a planning meeting.
Okay, well, I've got some comments on that, out of the way, but I do appreciate everything that y'all have all poured out for the county and her dedication and, but towards that. I'll be giving you some thanks coming at that meeting.
I've been expecting them.
All right. Thank you, sir. Well, then we'll move on to our public comments. With this, if you have mind, just come up to the podium, say your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. I'm going to take three minutes as up. I'll hold my hand up, try to finish up if you can. Would you guys want to speak separately or together?
Separately.
Separately, okay. Up first, we have Lisa Cenares. Is that right?
That's right. My name's Lisa Cenares, and I live at 1106 Neal Road in Walnut Cove. And I wanted to make some comments about the Green Box. First of all, I wanted to thank Commissioner Morris for coming out, taking time out of his busy day to come and see the site. I sincerely hope everyone else will come out and visit us, see how the Green Box will directly affect us in our daily lives. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Shaver for the email correspondence and keeping me updated with everything that's going on, and for the copy of the plans from the architect. It's certainly helped to alleviate some of the concerns we had regarding the proximity of the Green Box to our property, but we do still have other concerns, namely the increased traffic on the Neal Road, the environmental concerns, and the impact on our property values. I found some information online from EPA, and I would like to share some excerpts from the Waste Transfer Station Manual. And I'd like to start out by saying that on page two, it says that although citizen drop-off stations or community convenience centers are not technically waste transfer stations, it's important to note that they face similar concerns such as litter, road access, vehicle queuing, and stormwater runoff, and therefore the concepts in the manual should be implemented for those sites as well. Under the section regarding determination of station size and capacity, it says it's important that the queue not block public streets or impede vehicular or pedestrian traffic. We went up to Hanging Rock a couple of weekends ago and ran into a traffic jam at the current site. And so I understand the concerns for wanting to move this. I took some pictures on my phone, if anyone would like to see them. And I'm concerned that the situation's only going to transfer to Neal Road. Right now, when you're pulling out of Neal Road, there's a blind curve to the left, and we have a hard time pulling out with the traffic coming from both directions. And one of our neighbors said that there are a lot of people that go to the Green Box site that have trailers, and they're going to have a hard time pulling out because it's 55 miles an hour before the curve and 45 after it, and people don't slow down. Also, in the manual, under the section regarding site selection, under environmental justice considerations, it calls these negative impact facilities, which create health environment and quality of living concerns, which is a huge concern of ours, and negative impact on property values. It says the citing criteria should fall under three categories: exclusionary, technical, and community-specific. The exclusionary is mainly about endangered species and wetlands, which Neal Road doesn't fall under that. But under technical, it says that routing traffic through residential areas should be avoided because it contributes to congestion, increased air emissions and noise, and can cause litter problems. It says the site should not adjoin sensitive land uses such as residences and schools, and the site should be located away from school bus traffic. And there are a couple of buses that pick up and drop off students on Neal Road. Under community-specific, it lists impacts that the site will have on the surrounding communities, such as air quality, proximity to schools, churches, and residences, traffic compatibility, and impact on neighborhood character, which is also a huge concern of ours. It says the community-specific criteria should be prioritized before the potential sites are known and should not be ignored by the permitting agency or the developer. There are a lot of other points that they had about traffic, noise, odors, vectors, litter, but these are all in the, can all be found on the EPA website in the manual, so I won't go over them here. But at the end of the manual, it did have an appendix with links to the different states' rules, laws, and regulations. And for North Carolina, I went to the...
Ma'am, I just want to let you know you're about four minutes.
Oh, sorry. I'm almost done.
That's fine.
It's, I went to the Department of Environmental Quality website for North Carolina, and says that for buffers, the 500, there's buffer requirements, there's a 500-foot minimum between private dwellings and wells in the disposal area. And we measured 100 feet from our well to the border of the site where they want to put the site. So I know you all have a difficult job in locating a suitable site, and I appreciate the amount of work involved. I don't envy the task to find a site that fits all that criteria. But the health and welfare of the community must be taken into consideration, including the increased traffic that will directly impact the residents of Neal Road and the detrimental effect on property values as a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. James Saunders.
Here we go again. I'm going to try to make as brief as I can. It's the same old song and dance. I don't think it's an intelligent location. From my well to my neighbor's property line's less than 300 foot. And I don't know how y'all are going to substantiate the legality of a buffer zone 500 foot when you ain't even got 300 between two property lines. That's a space that the opportunity centers occupy. And you know, the whole thing is, you know, we shouldn't even be here talking tonight, really, because the whole thing is just totally out of proportion. You're bottlenecking the traffic into a smaller location, and I met the fellow that's supposed to be over the construction or whatever, and he seems like it's going to be some kind of experience, like going through a new drive-through or something, but it's still trash. And we've got two freshwater springs feeding my pond, and it's, that's a lot of concerns toward the environment and the noise and the stale smoke from island cars waiting in line, because you're still going to have a line regardless. It's still going to be hazardous. So you're just moving it from one crisis area and creating two crises by putting it in a smaller spot on a dead end road that's quiet and peaceful at this point, you know? And y'all going to vote on this tonight, or just public discussion about it?
That will be, it's on the extra agenda, but we can, if the board is not ready to make a vote, it can be moved.
Well, see, Walnut Cove had the last call on it, and we had two for and two against last Thursday. And we just found out about this meeting this afternoon. It was like lickety-split. We didn't even know it was going to be any kind of a vote or anything tonight. We thought Walnut Cove was going to be the last shot fired till their next meeting in December 17th. I mean, I don't understand how this is getting pushed when it's supposed to be a due process going on. Seems like it's a steamroller, and no matter how much we get up there and cry and weep, it seems like it's getting ready to happen, whether we want it to or not. And that's what I'm, you know, a little concerned about. I just, I don't understand a lot about politics, I'm sure, but everybody ought to have a shot, you know?
May I ask him a question?
Yes, sir.
Did you say you went to the Walnut Cove Planning Board meeting, and it was a two-two draw?
Yes, sir. They was missing one member, so it was a tie.
And that was last week?
Yes, sir. Two to two. I'm just confused, you know? I mean, is the deal already done? Are you just waiting for the public to quiet down a little bit and then go and get their bulldozers and tear everything down? I mean, I'm just curious, you know? I'm not trying to be no smart guy or nothing, but I just don't want it to happen, that's all. And nobody on our road wants it. We had another couple from down the road that went with us, met us Thursday night, but they had other things tonight. And we're trying to get everybody aware and active on it. I mean, a petition with a dozen people on it, it ain't going to move a lot, but everybody on that road don't want it, if that means anything.
I appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, sir. We'll now move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I must approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we want to discussion agenda. Up first, we have the Stokes County Schools five-year faculty study superintendent, I'm sorry, study. We have our superintendent, Dr. Rice, assistant superintendent, Dr. Brian Taylor, and I believe Mr., or Dr. Brian Taylor is going to speak on it. Dr. Rice, if you want to jump in, you come on up here.
I'm good. He is very able.
All right.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Brian Taylor. I'm the assistant superintendent for Stokes County Schools. And I am here tonight, before I get started, I want to recognize Dr. Rice. We have with us Mr. Doug Rose, our chief academic officer, and we have Mr. Ricky Goins, who is our director of facilities and maintenance. And Mr. Goins and his staff were very instrumental in putting this document together for us. Once every five years, school districts in North Carolina are required to submit a five-year facility survey, that is statute. And in that document, we are asked to provide information regarding the overall age of our facilities, energy consumption, number of classrooms, number of students served, capacity, et cetera. As you can see, it's a very thick document. It contains information from all 19 locations. This document was approved by our Board of Education last week for submittal, and part of the process requires us to come to you and ask for your approval as well. I met with the county manager's office last week and shared with them the document, we discussed it in some detail, gave them some information, a summary document, if you will, that you received as a part of your board packet for tonight. This information is due on January the 7th. It will go to the Department of Public Instruction. It will then be shared with the State Board of Education, and eventually it transitions over to the General Assembly for their use as well. So we are here tonight to answer any questions you may have about the document, and we respectfully ask that, due to the timeframe that we are facing, that we would like for you to take action tonight, if possible, so we can get this to Raleigh by January the 7th. So with that being said, I'll stop and give you a chance to ask any questions that you may have for this evening.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Taylor? Mr. Walker?
Thanks, sir. I was intended to go first, but since no one else expressed an immediate interest, I'll...
It looks like he's ready to talk, so I'll let you get in.
Your peripheral vision is still doing pretty well. Dr. Taylor, one of these, you weren't involved, but I think this is one of a series of procedures like this we've had happen and had available for whatever use can be made from it. I like to look for kind of patterns or what direction things seem to be going in, and I have not compared this to the one that was done, I guess, five years ago. But if they were compared, I know Dr. Rice has been instrumental, he's been involved with at least one more of these, I believe. Right, Dr. Rice?
Yes, sir. I was done right before I came.
Really? I thought you'd been here over five years.
It just seemed like forever.
I guess. Anyway, if either of you or anyone has done a comparison between the current one and the previous one, what if anything stands out in any particular way comparing the two?
Well, we do have Mr. Ricky Goins with us here tonight.
Ricky, go around a while.
Mr. Goins has been through this before. I think the first thing that probably would jump out between this one and the one done five years prior, is the number of students that we serve. There's going to be somewhat of a difference there. The overall age of our buildings, of course, are older by five years. A part of this process did require us to submit current needs and what we envision as long-range needs as well. So some of those will be different because we have been able to, through your... So some of those will be different, because we have been able to, through your assistance, to address some of the things that needed to be addressed five years ago, over the last five years. So there are gonna be some differences. Ricky, is there anything major that jumps out that you can speak to?
Well, one thing that we noticed when we did this that really jumped out at us is the state changed the class size capacity. So when we put in like a first grade class, the capacity of the school's changed. Five years ago, we could hold only, technically hold more children than it'll hold now. That's one thing that really jumped out at us, that I noticed. But again, like Dr. Taylor said, it's just, a lot of, it's just the energy we use, the capital projects that we feel like we need over time. Some of the numbers that you see, it's in the software, like for window replacements, we just put square footage in and he gave us the cost. But that's where a lot of these costs come in, just generated by the software.
Yes, sir.
I, I think typically, as I recall, when we go through, I won't be involved in the next one, but when the board goes through its budget cycle, some of the short-term needs are usually addressed at that time. And I do like the idea of having a five-year, at least a five-year projection of what the needs can be, because it's a good planning tool. Something to use to figure out how to deal with things as they appear on an ongoing basis. So I'm glad that this is available and that we have it to work with.
Well, in, in full transparency, those two lists were presented to the Board of Education. They are not in any type of priority order at this point. The board has not gone through, that's the needs that we addressed or we recognized as maintenance, school operations, looking at what has taken place over the last five years, what we see as immediate needs, and what we foresee as being long-term goals and long-term needs. So those two documents could, they're fluid, we could bring those back, have joint meetings if, if the Board of Education decides to do so at some point. But the board will have an opportunity to go back through those two lists and put those in more priority order. Those were just items that we have identified, both short-term and long-term right now, as a part of this process.
Are there other factors that could impact these projections? For example, we're living in some strange times. There's a lot of kids either being on a part-time basis or full-time basis homeschooled. And I'm wondering if after the immediate virus crisis is over or diminishing, how many of these students that are being homeschooled are likely to continue to be homeschooled? And if there's a significant number, what impact will that have on your five-year projections?
We have no way of predicting the future, of course. We would hope that, that all of those young people would come back to us, but realistically speaking, some of those may continue to be homeschooled. We, we simply can't give that answer. We don't know that answer. There are other projections, there are other documents that we have to provide to the state. There are other pieces of data the state uses to determine. They look at birth rate, the death rate of a community. They look at longitudinal information of how our student number, student enrollment increases and/or decreases. The state takes those data points and put those with information such as this to do predictions, to make predictions as they move forward with their planning process as well.
One other thing, and I'll give other board members a chance to ask their questions or make their comments. I appreciate our commissions, patience with me for allowing me to ask maybe an extra question or two. But generally speaking, Dr. Taylor and Dr. Rice, isn't our schools in fairly good shape today? Because I know we had a list of needs at our last budget, and we seem to address, to the best of my recollection, those needs that were presented to us. So generally speaking, aren't our schools in reasonably good shape at least now?
I, I'll let Dr. Rice speak to that, then I can give my opinion as well.
Yes, as far as we have safe buildings, we have adequate spaces for our children today. And when we bring you those lists, we look, we, we talk with Jake, we talk with, to find out what our projected budget number is. Then we try to match our needs to that budget number, and we do fix those things each year. So we have been able to accomplish a good amount of work in the last four and a half years that I've been here. Absolutely. We have, we have fixed a lot of roofs, we've fixed bleachers, we've fixed a lot of things. The, the reality is that we have a lot of buildings, again, are 40, 50 years old. And so window replacements, HVAC units that sometimes you don't know how long they have left are, are there. And we, again, we have repaired and fixed a lot of those things along the way, but there's still a lot of needs out there, you know? I, I'm almost 50, I, I could replace a part or two and still I'm old man. So that's kind of the way our schools are right now, that yes, we've got some new parts in some old buildings, and the buildings have good bones. They're, they're good, strong buildings. But the reality is that any day, something could go wrong in an HVAC system or, or things like that, where these things are, are older aging parts. Again, there's some buildings where a couple of years ago, we were pressure washing, getting ready to do some paint, and the water was coming through the windows into, into the building. We, there's a lot of things that, again, they're 40, 50, 60-year-old buildings at times. But yes, we, we have been able to accomplish a lot, thanks to the generosity of the commissioners in the last several years.
I understand what you're saying, Dr. Rice. My house is 63 years old. I know it needs some ongoing maintenance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I seen Commissioner Langford raising his hand there, just saying that he...
No, I, I was gonna ask Dr. Rice, I was gonna make a comment. Best of my knowledge, the last five-year plan that I seen, it was some roofs also in that. I'm hoping we got those roofs fixed.
And I don't have that roof list in front of me, but yes, we have fixed several roofs in the last five years.
I would think it...
You remember? I can't remember exactly what roofs we fixed in the last five years. I know we've done Chestnut Grove, Mount Olive. Chestnut Grove, Mount Olive. Cedar Tree. London.
London.
I think you, yeah, I think you probably got them...
Part of south, part of north. Yeah, part of north, part of south. The main building in the north is in the budget this year. Also, the group on the GM for Chestnut Grove, because it was replaced when the building was replaced. And also Lawsonville. The new, the older part of Lawsonville.
What about the tennis courts? I see they, they're on this list. Is that something that we've hadn't kept up, or what, what is the status of that?
The biggest problem with our tennis courts is over the past year, they just got refinished. That's not the problem, it's the sub-bases. So to really fix a tennis court like it needs to be fixed, you're taking in 40,000 to 50,000 dollars a court. You have to go in completely tear them up and start from scratch. So that's where the problem is already with the cracks. We have several schools, they're managing to crack the best they can and then try to resurface them.
Typical foundation bases for tennis courts are not that thick. So over time, if, if the sub-bass is not compacted, sifted well, you'll have stuff move up from the bottom, et cetera, just wear and tear. Back to Dr. Rice's comments, I concur. Yes, our, our buildings overall are in pretty good shape, but when you consider the overall age of some of the structures, windows, energy efficiency, the lifespan of mechanical products, it, there's always something, there's always something that needs to be addressed.
I thought homeowners only had that problem. I guess, I guess it's...
They've got 10 times 19.
That was the same thing. Well, thank you very much.
No more questions, comments? Commissioner Morse?
Mr. Chairman, thanks to Dr. Taylor for being here and Dr. Rice. The, whenever you guys do this study and update it and send it in to them, do they do anything with it that directly impacts the county back in a positive way, or like with funding or, or anything? Or are they just gathering data for some database, or what are they actually up there?
There are occasions that this information is used. State Board may use it as an initiative for some work with the General Assembly. I don't know how many of you are aware, but in the first iteration of the budget, it seems like 10 years ago, years ago, the state had identified some needs in all 115 districts. In lieu of putting out basically what amounted to a bond vote, state bond vote, the General Assembly had identified X number of dollars worth of needs in each of the 115 districts in North Carolina. That information, I would imagine, was taken from some of this, from the five-year ago study, from the study five years ago, I should say. So yes, sir, I, I don't know how often it's used, but I would imagine it's used to some degree. Is that a fair assessment?
But it's not a waste of time, then, to do it?
Would not imagine, no, sir.
Okay. Do they, do you guys, as we fund capital needs each year, do you adjust it each year to take off things that we, that are on there that we take care of?
We adjust our list, our five and short and long term. And then when this comes up in five years, it will be adjusted at that point. We only do this actual document, this process, once every five years. But we update our local list as things are checked off, if you will.
Okay. The only other thing I was surprised by was the cost it is to replace a running track, I guess it is, like at North Stokes, half a million dollars?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I thought that would have been cheaper than tennis courts or something, but...
Well, by the time you tear one up and you put the base back down and you regrade for draining and the composite type track, it, that's a fairly, fairly consistent price.
One of the more expensive items on there, actually, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Menon Hall?
I really don't have any questions. These look very familiar to me. You know, as, as Dr. Rice and Dr. Taylor said, it's a five-year facility plan. Five years. You have this in front of you, you have, you have to do it. State expects you to send in what you think are your most pressing needs. I think Ricky said that he, or Dr. Rice, someone said that it had not been prioritized. And that's because, as I look on this sheet, if you look over there at the needs, most of these are renovation needs. The reason I'm aware of exactly where that goes is during my two years superintendent, we built Popper Springs new, still brand-new Popper Springs, close to 19. We did in addition the Lawsonville Elementary School. And just before, about three years, four years, when Dr. Hobbs was here, I think, Knights Rowland Elementary School was built. And Southeastern got the additional building built there. Those were four, those are not really called renovations, additions to what you have in hand. But this is their job. This is not an easy job. It's a very difficult job to try to send to the state what you think you need down the line. And a question was asked about, I mean, people might come back from homeschooling. There's just no way to know that. Might have half of the people that are homeschooling right now come back. Three quarters, you might only have a quarter. You don't know. We've never had a time like this. You gotta remember, we've never had a pandemic that has affected the school system the way this is affecting our school system. I mean, right now, you know, you got virtual learning, you got the A-day, B-day, all the different plans that have been laid out there. And they're in a very difficult situation right now. And, uh, but I guess what I'm saying is, ultimately is, a lot of these things, we are very familiar to me. Pine Grove, I know has some things that may be down, a lot of these schools do, Pine Hall, a lot of the schools. But then we have some new schools, some very nice schools, state-of-the-art schools. And you just, you know when you mind which schools. I think West Stokes was built in 99. And as you go through, it, it's just a difficult process. And I will say this, two things that I know Ernest and Jimmy was on board with us when we got, two things I thought was real big. One was capital, one was current, but I'm gonna give them both out. There's North Stokes and South Stokes, 56 years old. And they did not have air conditioning in the gyms when I became on this board. And they have air conditioning in the gyms now, which I thought was very big for the community. When you have programs or when you have grad, maybe it rains you out on graduation and you have to go inside. I think that's very big. And the other thing, I just, again, I know this, this is not gonna be anything to do with the facility plan here, but we did get them the full 4% supplement. Good things, I thank all the board members that heard that, to be proud of. And I just think that will continue to work well with the school system. I, I just would say, Neil, I will be closing on this. Well, I'm just glad I'm not sitting in a superintendent's chair right now.
We were in a meeting earlier, I told him I'd pull up a chair if he wanted to come sit with me.
Thank you, S.A. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to say on behalf of the young people of Stokes County, thank you for the time, for allowing us to come and talk with you tonight and share this document with you. This is part of what we do. We'll send this along to DPI, and once we get everything signed, and we'll, we'll get it sent off, so...
I want to tell you, this is, this is not surprising, of course, everything he's making. Saturday was having a good day, went to our company Christmas party, family was happy, and I pulled up my agenda and looked at this, and I got depressed, so...
Don't worry about that.
Yeah, but you know, it's understandable, it's gonna happen, you know? I just appreciate you guys going through the work, putting this all together. Ricky, special thank you for all your hard work for the schools over all these years. I know you've been the one that's keeping an eye on these schools, making sure they stay up to par, and we appreciate that, appreciate you, everything you do on it. But also, you guys need us to move to action tonight, is that correct?
If that would be possible, we would respectfully request that. Yes, sir.
Jimmy, do you mind if we move this to action tonight?
Only a little.
How's the rest of the board?
If I may, but the reason he asked me that, is sometimes I sort of question moving things to action, because it's been really a breach of our protocol.
I understand.
But there's times when it's justified, inappropriate. I'll only focus just a little bit on this one, not much at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. How's the rest of the board?
Good. All right. All right. Well, now we move on to item B, the firefighter academy. And we have our county manager, Mr. Oakley, also we have Dr. Rice and Dr. Taylor here, if we have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that was in the budget that we discussed back in last May. Also discussed it jointly with the school board. And we all agree that this is something we need in our county to promote the volunteering of our local fire departments. And this, this academy would promote this training in our schools in a way that it would help our young, all of them in volunteering in our fire department. As you can see here, that this position, they have got someone that is interested in teaching this, this class. And you also see here in, in the agenda that the actual cost of, for having this class in our schools would be $37,000, $340,000. And that's what's, what was actually in the budget when we talked about it back last May. And I'm, I was at that time for it. I think this is a, something that is... I think this is a, something that is, uh, to pay off in the long run. Uh, because the cost of, uh, funding eight volunteer fire departments is astronomical, and it's something that would be very, very, uh, heavy burden on our taxes, on our citizens, so. If there's any way we can move forward with this, I think it's a good idea, and I think it'd be something good for our citizens to make sure that, uh, we, uh, we have our first responders taken care of in a manner that there's people, uh, in there. This, uh, this right here, this, like I said, this thirty, this thirty-seven thousand, three forty-one is for a happy year. And, uh, I would, uh, leave it to the board on how they want to address, how this fund will be either go to the school or here, or however you want to handle it, but I, I would love to see it moving forward. You also see the, uh, actual, uh, budget amendment that you're using to pick up for you to, uh, move forward with this. Awesome. With that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm sure that this will, uh, Dr. Rice, Dr. Teller, will answer any questions that you may have on that, and I will also.
All right, and before I open up, I just want to say I am a huge supporter of this, mainly because I could see it could probably save us money in the long run. Um, the biggest question I got on this, with the schools the way they are right now, would you guys still be allowed to teach this course through the second half of the year, if it stays like it is now?
Yes, sir, but I'll let Mr. Rose speak to the required enrollment is right now, what we, if we were allowed to have it, and, and answer some of those questions.
Okay.
So, currently, we, um, we've opened it up at South Stokes, and we have had quite a few students to sign up. I've had some parents to call, interest in entrance, uh, and possibly their kids, whatever. Well, if you're looking at the two classes in South and one in North. This is more my hands-on class. It will start with public safety. Uh, public safety one for this semester, then next year, we're offering public safety one, firefighting one. We're gonna continue to add a class per year to provide a program from there. But yes, this is one that we would be able to offer. Um, we just would have to look at, at the same options that we're running under right now, depending on what the governor's orders are. Be more safe for our families.
Okay. And just around about number, how many students have you shown interest, has shown interest in signing up for it?
Right now, we're looking at about twenty, but we have not really started recruiting at North for this one.
Okay, good to hear. Any more questions or comments? Mr. Morse?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, I, I think I can support doing this, and, uh, I think one of the questions I had whenever we talked about it before was, uh, or a statement, I guess, is that I would like to see you guys, over some period of time, I guess it would have to be at least two years, maybe, uh, set up some kind of metrics to measure the results of the program, so. So if you do that, see if, see if it's something we want to continue after, uh, after getting started with it. I think there's a lot of support for doing it. Even though I'm a little nervous about spending because the, uh, our financial reports really haven't shown us what, what our true financial situation is. We're just not far enough into the year, but this is not an expenditure that would break the bank or anything. But I did hear that, over the weekend, that the local government commission is considering taking over some municipalities that are having budget problems, so. Hopefully, we'll have more visibility pretty soon on, on what our, our budget impacts may, may be for additional spending. But I'm, but I'm good with it, I think. So, I have, Mr. Chairman.
More questions or comments? Commissioner Langford.
But, uh, can, can somebody tell me what's changed in the way the, uh, fire departments is getting their training now? I mean, fire departments used to have a training program themselves through the, uh, I guess it was the, uh, not sure exactly where, where it was, but anyway, they, they had a training program, and I just wonder if that, that's died or quit or what.
I guess y'all know, it's one of my brainchild. I think it's one of the greatest things we can do for Stokes County. Our volunteer fire departments, y'all are all aware, the enrollment is shrinking, and eventually, one day, could get, we'll get to a point where we would have to go to a paid staff in all of our volunteer fire departments. And Scott and I estimated, I believe it was last year, we came up with a number of about five to seven million dollars the county would have to put out every year to put twenty-four-seven coverage in every department, and that was on to like two firemen or possibly three. So if we don't do something to get the young people interested again in it, uh, then that, that could be the future of the county. And, and we just don't need that kind of burden on the taxpayers of the county. Um, the, Forsyth County, Eddie Bottoms is a good friend of mine. He started the program, or was involved in starting the program in Forsyth County, and it's been hugely successful. They agreed upfront to a three-year commitment to the program down there. And, and he said it took almost three years, but then the fire departments in the school, in the area of the schools where it was being offered, started growing again. The young people got interested in it and started hanging out at the fire stations again. And so that keeps them from having to hire firemen for those departments, you know. And it gives our young people opportunity, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but when they come out of high school, instead of having to take off down to the coast to that school down there to get certified, they've basically got almost all of their credentials to go to work as a professional fireman in any city. Is that correct? So it's a career path, you know, as well as that first program, if I'm not mistaken, will also give them an introductory course to EMS, to the sheriff's department, to, as well as the firefighter. So it's not just firefighter, it's, it's all three of them, you know, and it gives them a, a look at, this is the life of a sheriff, this is the life of a law enforcement officer, a firefighter, or a, uh, a paramedic, you know, so. It, it's, I highly encourage you and would really appreciate if y'all would consider getting behind this because I believe it'll really make an impact on our county in the future.
Well, that's the difference that I didn't know anything about. It's the reason I asked.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know. I know that, I've, I've been involved with the fire departments for a long time, and, uh, and we used to have a, a training program, uh, every year.
Right.
Train the ones, the new ones that was coming in, so.
Yes, and at, uh, campaigns at the eighth grade, um, the career, thank you, Doug, yeah. I can't remember, Scott said it was eighteen or twenty-eight of the eighth graders, the fire, the fire marshals office set up a booth with a little questionnaire, just trying to see if there was interest, and it's either eighteen or twenty-eight students came by and like, oh, yeah, be interested in taking this if it were offered to us, you know. And with the eighth graders, of course, that's been a year or two ago that we did that, and so, uh, they'll, they'll be the ones that are coming up that we could offer this to if y'all choose to.
That's, that sounds good.
Yes, sir.
That's a strategy.
And it should have lasting effect for the county, you know, we, we won't see an immediate result, but we'll see a long-term result for the county.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Langford, I received a text from, uh, our Fire Marshal, Scott Aaron. So they're still required to get monthly training. This will get kids involved and trained so they can come out of school and be ready to serve the community. This gets the high schoolers a start that they can get in the fire departments due to regulations. They have a lot more leeway in the school.
Okay, sounds good.
They worked a whole lot with Forsyth County for this, for whatever reason, asking them to work it out like, like it should. But, when you get into the community colleges, then they're looking to, um, offer classes that are, are, or or individuals that's ready to go into it as a professional learner. And this allows our students to start building up and getting ready and getting some kind of idea if that's something they would want to, uh, uh, take and prolong their, their education in and, and get into something long-term, so. It is, it is a very good tool that Stokes County could offer for their, for their core high school kid. And I think it'd be very beneficial to the, uh, schools, the children, the taxpayers, and just, you know, all the way around. It's win-win, I think.
Yeah, I, I see that. It's gonna be good for, for the, uh, if they, if they got that much interest, maybe, well. Yeah?
Yeah, Commissioner? Oh, yeah, Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, I see.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Menon Hall, I guess, can you raise your hand, request?
I'm just, I'm completely in support of this program right here. During the campaign season, Congressman McHenry and I visited, uh, the South Stokes Fire Department. Got some numbers, uh, from the chief there. Certainly, uh, it's been made at this point for this program. The only question I had, Dr. Rice and Dr. Teller, Doug, and a lot of curriculum, but was, and you had already covered it, was with the pandemic situation. Now, and the virtual reality and the different programs you have to deal with now, and then it being implemented, if I could explain. That's the only question, because I am in support of this. I just want to make sure it could be implemented during.
And even with all of the hands-on options that we have with our CTE programs, we're all in all of those. We are working real. You know, working towards, because we're staying in CTE department, there are regulations to make them happen. But we can, we can work through the great ones that are on private, and we can work, and we'll work that structure with that.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Walker?
Well, a lot of good discussion, comments, questions, and I, uh, one thing I will mention, and I agree with a lot of what's been said so far, and I certainly support this program. Um, I'm a supporter of volunteerism. Unfortunately, things seem to be going in the other direction. So if there's things we could do to sort of kindle that fire again and get more people, particularly our younger folks, interested in volunteering and serving their communities in that capacity, then it's certainly worthy, I think, of my support. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Move on to the action of the next meeting. Are we good with that?
Does that, can we ask them if that is an issue? I know they have somebody there looking at it, so I can't, and I'm not sure if that delays their, uh, is that?
Would that hurt anything, but does it?
What would be the date of that next meeting?
December, uh, fourth?
Well, would it be the, approving the stuff, like the recess meeting this one?
Yeah, that's true. It'd be December, um, third.
Yeah.
December third will be the recess meeting.
We could, next time, we would be able to, to live on our action, I would be December fourteen, to hire somebody.
Okay.
And so if it's on the week before then, so we could make that plan.
Okay, so December third is plenty of time. Thank you, guys. All right, now, when we move on to item C, the Fire Marshal requests to purchase AEDs. And, Fire Marshal's not here, are you taking that?
I'll take this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this right here is something that, uh, the Fire Marshal had requested in his budget, and we were gonna talk about it in one of the, uh, areas of, uh, budget reviews. And then we moved forward with, uh, with what we elected to do with our departments. Uh, Shannon and, and Scott all got together, kind of looked at it, and here's an item that could be purchased through COVID money that we've got left over. And these, uh, Life Pack, one thousand automatic defibrillators, uh, well, you're looking at about seventy-five hundred dollars total. And, uh, what it does is it allows the, uh, first responders to, uh, have a, uh, automated, automated defibrillator that could save a life. And, uh, and given we have, uh, some COVID money left over, I would recommend that we would also allow, uh, the, uh, uh, Fire Marshal's office to have these defibrillators so they could, they could cure them out. Uh, to, uh, cause that are, are needed.
Commissioner Menon Hall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very special request for me. And I think what makes it even more, uh, exciting is that we can take care of it with a CARES grant money coming out of our general fund balance. Part of our COVID-nineteen CARES Act money that we have, uh, seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents. All the schools have AEDs. I've had two heart attacks. My brother just passed away, uh, three months ago of a heart attack. And, uh, I don't know if he could have been saved or not, if we had AED at that situation, had it saved or anything else, but, uh, I know, uh, I don't know, I won't say it, well, are those factual, uh, things? They certainly are factual, and, uh, and I know it's a little emotional for me. But I'm, I'm, I just wanted you to know, Mr. Chairman, I'm in full support.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions, comments? Commissioner Morse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm supportive of getting these things too. I like spending the COVID money on this type of an item. Um, I just want to double-check and make sure we wouldn't be supplanting the budget to do that, though, right? Y'all check that out already?
Yeah, he didn't, um, these are not something he had requested already. He just brought them up out of the budget, the budget review meeting, I guess, I would like, like to have.
Okay.
We cut it out of the original, so as long as we don't put anything in there that was cut out of the proposed when it never got, it never made it to the recommended budget.
Okay, okay, good. Yeah, I'm, I'm support getting this, then. I'm good. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you. I like the sound of it. Sounds like there could be some benefit. See, now, we're looking at, I think, three. And those three will be dispersed in what way?
There's gonna be one for each person in the Fire Marshal's office. They'd have one in each of their response vehicles.
I'm, uh, in favor. Let me, let me just kind of add something, if I may. We live in pretty much a, we live in a rural county. We have pop areas with higher population densities, southwest quadrant of the county, for example. But there's a lot of the county that doesn't have a doctor's office very near, or certainly a hospital very near. If we can do things that give our citizens a chance of being healthier and surviving a critical situation, I, I've supported that all along and certainly continue to with something like this. I think, I think it's important, I think it brings more peace of mind to our citizens to know if there's a need, we're providing the best equipment we can, certainly in a reasonable way, to address those needs. And if somebody has a critical situation involving a, uh, something that they could benefit from with a AED being available, you know, I think that's a step in the right direction. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Langford, you have anything on this?
Did the Fire Marshal say anything about how many they had?
I think we're getting three, but this is recorded. They don't have any on, they, they don't have the.
They bought some one time.
The one, if they have any left, they're very outdated and all, whatever need to be replaced. Any, any of that equipment that he was asking for at that budget review meeting, either they don't have it currently, or it, it needs to be replaced because it's outdated. So this is a chance for them to get three, three new ones, up-to-date ones, and use the CARES Act funding for that because it limits their exposure, they're using that equipment.
They're first before they need to live support ambulance. We bought these devices, we upgraded them, and those ambulances recently.
Now, that's what I was thinking. It was some purchase in, when the budget was around. At least just additional.
It's additional with our Fire Marshal. Because sometimes they would give that first if a patient is called. And, uh, you know, a couple minutes might mean the difference with somebody's life.
Yeah, I understand if, if we have a need, they, they are very useful and quick to, people knows how to operate them, it's right there with them.
They do that, it's true.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Yes, since it's with the COVID money, I have no problem with it. Move, if we move into action, December 3rd, that gives plenty of time?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that? All right. Move on to item D, the Fire Department funding. Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that I'm requesting that you look at. This is the reason why the COVID funding gave the county and our municipalities a certain amount of CARES Act funds. Walne Cove, Danbury, of course, kept those, but, I mean, King. Danbury elected to refund it back to us. They didn't, they didn't have any word to, to spend this money. I am requesting that you take this $11,000 that the Danbury had. They received $11,138 of this CARES Act funds. And I'm asking that you give $1,000 to each one of our Fire Departments. We have 11 Fire Departments, which includes Walne Cove and City of King. And allow them to buy additional PPEs and supply what they need to make sure that they are well-covered in anything that may come up in, in, in the near future with, with concerns of this virus. So this is, this is sitting here, and this would be a good way to disperse them. Make sure they stop returning and they go after our community.
Just curiosity, if the Fire Department does not spend their $1,000 by the end of year, does that matter?
That was just as long as we get sent it to them.
Okay. Any more questions, comments on that? Commissioner Morse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're just redistributing the money that Danbury was supposed to get to the other departments, right? Why did, why did they not have a need for it? I mean, like, to buy PPE, for example, why wouldn't they?
I can't answer that question.
They just said they didn't? And they don't want the $1,000 either?
Yeah, we offered them their share, and they elected at their meeting during that time to not take it. And they asked and sent me a letter that refused, I could pitch to the state, and they just didn't have enough expenses in their area.
Oh, okay. But all the other Fire Departments can spend it the way it's supposed to be spent if we give, if we just redistribute it?
Yeah, we looked at ideas of, like, purchasing them, electrostatic bombers, like we purchased here, because that's around about $400 or $500, playing a bill and things like that with them, and distributing those out, but we figured, oh, just what he's here to do is $1,000 each of them. That way they can purchase one of those if they want, or buy other cleaning materials or maybe they might need for their department.
Yeah, okay. Okay, seems like a fine idea to me.
Any more questions or comments on that? All right. Is everybody fine with moving it also to December 3rd?
I would say consent.
Consent?
We can have a consent, we will have a consent agenda at that meeting.
Well, we can, that was going to be just a, we can do a consent agenda. Yeah, we can add that too, because I'll have some minutes on there too for approval of that meeting. It'll be our regular meeting agenda, just a recess meeting. So we can put that one on consent if you'd rather.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Moving on now to item M, the Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Oakley.
Capital Reserve, this is something that probably Julie Edwards could talk about a little bit better than I can, but if this was something that was taken out.
This is something, normally we have been transferring across 2100 to 125,000 dollars to Capital Reserve into a public buildings capital account in that fund for repairs, age backs, roofs, anything that breaks that, and this includes the hospitals that we would have to repair or replace. We have some air conditioning problems in the summer that we was able to use Capital Reserve monies and not, but due to our not knowing how our budget, the sale tax and all that's going to be, we didn't transfer any this year. We said we'd look at it at budget review. And so I've just brought this back up to see if the board wants to transfer any money there. They have approximately 180,000 in there. So at this time, so it's just a question I had on the board if they wanted any more funds transferred in there for any breaks or, it's just a reserve fund that we have, so if something, there's a break, so we have to replace a roof or something. I mean, one paid for a big building like this, but it would pay something for it.
And it's only on this agenda because it was part of the budget review meeting. And we figured all those things towards the end.
All right.
So it's something, I mean, whatever the board wants to do, I just thought, because it was said we would view it, we didn't do anything in the budget, and we just review it at budget review time.
Okay. All right, questions, comments on that? And Commissioner Walker?
Okay, it's my understanding that even though this is transferred into the fund that you're describing, it would still take board approval before it's actually spent, I believe.
Yes, sir. It has to be, but it then has to be done, transferred out of Capital Reserve.
Right.
The manager nor I believe.
I would have no problem just being on the consent agenda also, unless there's opposition.
Commissioner Morse?
I call me, you know, we don't really know anything more about the funding status than we, but with one quarter's worth of, of data that was presented in our financial report than we did whenever we made this original decision. So I don't know where that means you've put it in or take, we decided to take it, keep it out then. We don't know anymore now than we knew then, so. But it really doesn't matter with the board. If we have an emergency, the board's going to fix it with one fund or the other, so.
And if it's in the designated fund, then it's there when it's needed.
I mean, it's nice to have a big Capital Reserve fund, so I don't have a problem doing it.
Any more questions or comments on that?
May I ask you a question, less Commissioner Lankford or Menhoe? Do you, could you describe, and I think Commissioner Morris makes a good observation, but what particularly would be the advantage to going ahead and transferring that? If you would please share that with us. What would be the advantage of going ahead and moving that to the other fund?
Just have it over there in the Capital Reserve fund, be it held for anything, because if we use the other funds that are in there, we get down to zero, then you will have to take it from your fund balance or find somewhere to find the money.
So.
And it's, it's up to the board. I just brought it back up publicly, said we could suggest it, so.
I can, I can support it.
It's in there, it keeps you from spending on something else.
Right. Sort of locks it in.
It's kind of like a budget drill, really, is about all it is. Budget discipline drill, I guess you could call it.
Any more questions, comments on this?
There's 173,272 out there now, sitting there in Capital Reserve. So it's just, it's just whatever, how much does the board who's sitting out there want to be? Of these things that might pop up.
I just want her to have it in here. Everybody fine with that, moving to consent? Yes? Yes.
We'll be looking at all that again in two or three months here, anyway, so.
Or you know it.
You know it. Some of us will, I should say.
Jimmy can still come visit on that, if you want to.
I may watch.
All right, move on to item M, the Life Right Pine Hall Community Campus Generator Request.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that was, has been requested in the past, and. That was coming back up again, that the Pine Hall site and our doctor's office and that the areas for this, that's M311, be, have a generator that would supply the medical supplies that they have in, in their doctor's office. They are needing that, you know, in case a power goes out, and the recent, recent times, power went out with all that we have.
Hurricanes, we get to come through with all this water.
They have, they have problems. They have to find a place to put this medication. With the COVID that's coming out, that requires refrigeration, the vaccine requires refrigeration. The first, the first vacuum requires refrigerating in, in the areas of, it's really cold, so I don't know how we can handle any of that, but I'll leave that with the doctors and the health department, those, those folks to figure that out. But I do, I do believe that we need to have a second backup of the area of power supplies that are integrated that would supply the actual area for, for that doctor's office and to make sure that they kept their medical supply at a temperature that is caused for. And you'll see in, in, in here, in the agenda, that there's a couple of quotes here on generators. You can do some ones that would just be for that certain area, or you can go with doing the entire conflict, which would be as much as 51,000, or you could go with just making sure that you've got the area that is needed for pack up of, of supply of power, which is about 10,000. So that would be my recommendation right now, due to your budget restraints that you are looking at in monies that is being, being spent and what is going to come in. And so with that, I'm going to determine, I think, 10,542 would be my recommendation that board would do with, in making sure that, for medication, as I take care of this Pine Hall.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
That amount. So there's a couple of different quotes in here. Some of the quotes are out of date because they were received during the budget process back in January and February, something even older than that. So what we've done is, before we go out for new quotes on a generator for the size, we wanted to kind of get a consensus and see if the board was interested in doing this, and if they will get amounts, we put a budget limit in that we can transfer over that wouldn't exceed 15,000. We can get an exact quote on that. So it wouldn't exactly be that 10,000 or something. We're just not, I'm not positive of the exact amount. I wouldn't say it'd change a lot, if any, but I just wanted to make sure we understood that.
Can y'all tell me who done the 10,542 quote? The reason why I ask, because the other two quotes is from the same company? The 12,000 and the 51,000? Or was there any reach out to any other companies about giving a quote on this?
That would be a Glenda question. She's watching, so she might answer as I continue if she's listening.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Well, that TK's Electrical did one quote for 12,138,14, and they did a quote for the whole building for 51,477,35, but there's one other quote on here that's 10,542, and it's pretty old. And I'm not sure exactly what it's from, because it's not this cut off.
It's probably just one of the same companies, but for a long range of reports.
Okay. Any more questions? Commissioner Morse?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can find that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question I have is the, I think, first of all, we definitely need to have a backup generator at that facility. That, not only for the medical, I mean, you could probably lose enough vaccine to pay for three of these things if you have a power outage like we did the other day, where we were out for four or five days up here. And then that, that building could probably also be used for a shelter or something if it had to be with the other room in it. So the thing that surprised me a little bit, like, was the 13KW. I've got a 22KW Generac on my house that runs everything, the pump, the water heater, the, the heat pumps, it'll run all that stuff. And, and I only paid 12,000 for it, which included a five-year maintenance contract. So I, I'm kind of wondering why they didn't quote like a 22KW instead of a, which is one of the standard ones Generac puts out. I'd like to maybe ask that question, at least.
Yeah. It's a message in me saying that these quotes came from the actual, the top one, at least the 10,000, came from the Pine Hall Center, they sent her that quote. She's not sure what the word name went to, but she's not sure either. But she would check on the normal vendors that she checks with on sizes and prices and all that, if you bring that back.
There's one in Metta's of Dan that's put in most all the generators around here, I think. I'll, I'll have to look up the name, but that'd be one place I would get a quote. They really know what they're doing. And then others do as well, I'm sure, but.
That's one reason we kind of let it be 15,000, was these quotes are old. And too, if we need to quote something a little bit stronger or something, we would have a little bit of leeway there.
I would think you'd get that 22 for 15,000, for sure, but anyway.
I would argue that much.
I think we need to do it, put, put it out there, definitely.
I'll let her know to get some quotes from some of the vendors that she uses.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Any more questions, comments on, Commissioner Walker?
This, this, I think our manager mentioned it might be needed because of the vaccines need to be refrigerated.
And what you have currently.
Right, would that qualify possibly for COVID funds?
I'm going to say no, because I don't even know if there are places we're going to be able to house those. They're saying in the beginning they're going to send that vaccine out to the larger places that require some kind of extreme old storage that we may not have access to here. So I'd be nervous about saying that we were doing that towards.
If I heard, right, it was negative 92 degrees, it's got to be stored up.
Yeah, I'd be nervous to say we couldn't do that.
Well, I thought I would ask.
It's worth a shot, it'd be worth a shot, for sure.
But hopefully, those vaccines will come out later, in 21, that's more like the vaccines we have currently in refrigeration that we're housing already. It just calls for a, a refrigerator-type system that's just part of the freezer.
Sounds to me like, particularly based on Commissioner Morris's comments and questions, that maybe we need, right now, just more information about what would be a good direction to go in with this.
For sure.
We can bring you some new quotes, that.
Bring somebody. May not be Commissioner Lankford, maybe, but somebody.
We need to, we need to move that this is possible. Something does happen, what they do kind of has to be moved quickly.
The problem is, we just can't vote on it because we don't know the updated prices, correct?
No, you won't, you know, until we get that back. Mark stands in the, like, Carolina generator, they use to service generators too. Yeah, I'll get with Glenda and Mark, we'll get some updated quotes if you're interested in doing something like that.
Everybody good on that?
Good on that.
I don't put a date on it yet, because I don't know that they can get all that with the holiday by December.
Right.
So we'll say, as soon as I can get it back.
All right, thank you, Shannon. We want to item G, the COVID-19 Safety Measures?
This is right on the agenda that we need to maybe start taking into consideration of with this virus starting to spread a little more. Stokes County recently put into an orange status, if you didn't pay attention to it, and the governor's updates on what, how the state is, is being treated and guidelines that he's putting out for that. We just want to make sure that what Shannon, myself, and any, any of your administration does, that we are doing it in a manner that everyone is on the same page, that our board is involved in it. What's, what's been done, really, and the task may not work now, so we may want to look at taking some steps. You know, the governor just today talked about mandatory masks for everyone, we start Wednesday, or the 20th?
The 20th.
The 20th. And hopefully, those shutdowns will come back with us. I think that's just testament to our community, but. I don't know, I think we need to start promoting a little more, in a way that people are protecting themselves and, and they are, are more aware of what's, what's out here. So with that said, you know, Tammy, she's, you also have in your. What Tammy is suggesting that we do. And with that, you know, do we, what kind of measures we take place here? And do what we restrict here with the public and what you can do as, as far as what the laws that you can do. So it's just open discussion that the board needs to start talking about now, because it could, it could get worse. Hopefully it won't, but if it does. Hopefully it won't, but if it does, we need to be ready.
We had a couple of departments in the past week or so that had several people to get sick at once, not several, but a few. And then a couple more had to be quarantined and almost got to the point of what they would consider an outbreak at the health department. So if it got to that point, the whole department would have to be closed. And then everybody be quarantined for a certain amount of time, which would completely shut out that service for a little bit until you got everybody back in there. So we're just trying to find a way to prevent that from happening if we can and limit some of the exposure so we can keep things flowing and make. Government is an essential part of life, so you have to keep everything going, but you want to try to be as careful as you can and not, you know, have any issues with what the employees work in.
People talking about like.
Yeah, so we, yeah, this work slows down right now.
I know you've seen Shannon's email on that. How that was working, you know, we just, together with the sheriff and people, everybody follow. We get the ball rolling and making sure that certain equipment is not hanging because of breakage. So we had medical note back in the center right now with repairs. Have to be with big lots of forces.
We had any businesses shut down on account of? Have we had any businesses in Stokes County to shut down?
No, not, not, not completely that I'm aware of from the health department, no.
What kind of, have they got a suggested time that they want to shut down and they file on?
Who have got suggested time?
Yeah.
Tammy's just saying that while we're having this large surge in cases, they had the most cases they've seen record-wise last week in our health department. Just until that surge is over, sort of just kind of through the holidays, getting people sort of stagger their schedules like they looked in the spring where you have kind of a, maybe a A shift and a B shift working. So everybody's not here at once. So if somebody did get exposed or whole staff's not exposed, and maybe some of the ones that are, can work from home, can do some of that during this time too to limit the amount of people in the buildings. So she didn't really have a timeline on it because this, this has sort of hit quickly as far as the increased numbers, and she doesn't really know when that'll be over. We have, we have had some, a couple of employees to be pretty sick, so.
As you can see, some of the Jordan County's just started to turn large.
Yeah, we don't want to get in red, that's for sure.
Yeah, if we can prevent going in that way, we'll be good.
Any more questions or comments on this?
Sorry, Kim, we just went reading.
Commissioner Morris?
The, in the memo that you guys sent out, you asked for our feedback on this page five in the attachment. So I'll start with giving you my feedback on that. It's got two columns. The first one has got four things on it. The first one says, "Role model any activity, or role model and actively promote the three Ws. Always wear a mask when you're with people you do not live with." I want to read you a little something I found today on masks, just been a lot of discussion on masks tonight. I thought this was kind of interesting. Says, "In two thousand and eight, Dr. Anthony Fauci co-authored a paper about the Spanish flu epidemic and the rates that rates as the most devastating modern pandemic. It swept the entire planet in the wake of the First World War and caused millions of deaths. So when studying this major and actual pandemic, what did Dr. Fauci and his colleagues find? They discovered that most of the victims of the Spanish flu didn't die from the Spanish flu. They died from bacterial pneumonia, and the bacterial pneumonia was caused by, give you a guess, by wearing masks." Thought that's quite interesting. The intention then, as now, was to halt the spread of the disease by wearing masks. But what actually happened was that an unobserved pandemic of bacterial pneumonia was unwillingly created instead. I just thought that's kind of interesting on the mask, and that speaks to my, I don't have any guidance for you on the first bullet. On the second one, it says, "Post signs about the three Ws." That's fine if you guys have some signs and want to do that. Work with local media to share messages about the importance of wearing a mask and practicing the three Ws. I don't have a problem with you doing that as long as they don't charge us for it. And then have all public employees download and use the Slow COVID NC app. And I looked at that, and that looks like a fine thing to do if somebody's interested in doing it. On the other column, it lists a whole bunch of things. I don't really have a problem with the staff doing some of those things like working with the state to expand no-cost testing or. Let me see, I didn't really see much of any other ones on there that I thought made a whole lot of sense. The, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you any guidance to do any of the rest of them. And I certainly wouldn't, would not entertain putting any new ordinances in to give people penalties and enforcement and so forth for these statewide restrictions. I wouldn't go there personally. And then there's one about ending alcohol sales for on-site consumption at an earlier time. I wouldn't do that either. I pretty much, I can choose a little bit on the right column, but I'm not really too interested in doing much of anything that's on that one. And this thing you just handed out about closing the building, did the health board meet on that and discuss it? Or is that just Tammy's opinion?
No.
Wasn't discussed, the board?
I didn't.
Yeah, I was sorry to say, I don't think so.
I don't know, you know, I don't know how, I don't know really how to give any advice on whether you should close the buildings or not, you know. I don't really know, I don't really know that that would really impact things one way or another. I guess I would defer to someone with more expertise. Wouldn't object if, kind of be nice if the health board was looking at data or something along with the health director before you made a decision of that magnitude. But if you guys determine that you need to do it in order to protect our people, then I probably wouldn't be against doing it, so.
That's kind of what we're looking for a little bit of is just not going to do anything completely outlandish. But if something does happen and we have a breakdown of cases in two-year building, you know, we want to notify you. It might not be time to call a meeting beforehand to make, probably might not be time to just feel like what they're claiming to do. But you know what's happening, so just to kind of make sure that as that unfolds, if things happen, that we're okay to do, act on it in a common sense way.
I would definitely empower the staff to do that. And the one thing I wouldn't do, send any more of those alerts out like came the other day. A lot of people weren't happy about that, but the, I thought mine was on my forewood, and I thought the transmission locked up or when it started squealing or something, but.
Yeah, I was, that one, that one shocked, that's what came over too, I wasn't sure. But that same alert system has been used this time to, she did an alert a while back about when we changed our operating hours back in the spring, how we were doing business here. They did one about the mass testing, like at the schools. That would particularly just seem to catch a lot of people. I guess we hadn't had one in a while, maybe?
I think, I think that people don't like to be treated like children. And to me, that alert was like treating adults like children, like they ain't got enough sense to know what they're supposed to do. I mean, they've been dealing with this now for nine months or something. I think everybody's pretty well got figured out what they need to do or not do, and what they're gonna do or not do. So you might look at your internal controls for releasing those mass messages. I think when I was here, we only had three people that could approve sending out that mass message thing. So I think it was myself, Darlene, and the emergency management, or it may have been myself and Darlene and Diana. But you might want to revisit that and, you know, have some more eyes, look at it before you send these things out. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions or comments on that? Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, sir. One of my initial concerns, and it's still present to some extent, maybe it hasn't even changed that much, was when people start getting out and about again, they get kind of having fever to the point where they're willing to be out doing more, maybe taking more chances. That the numbers would jump up substantially. And I'm wondering if that's some of what we're dealing with now. But another thing too, just based on what I'm hearing out talking to people and from various sources, is that there's more serious cases now than there was in the beginning. You've experienced some in your family, others have. I know a lot of people or some people who are having more serious issues regarding the virus than they were in earlier times. Another concern, and I think even though Commissioner Morris didn't address it directly, is that how do we compare the, what the precautions are causing? Discomfort-wise, fear-wise, anxiety-wise, you name it, and to the point of where we possibly are having people die from the precautions? For example, we have older people in the rest homes. I know there's outbreaks in the rest homes, but there are ways around it. Bring the patient outside, which some rest homes are doing now. And they're laying there wondering why their family is deserting them. Hospitals should be safe. You should be able to sterilize things and sanitize things. And you can't even visit someone in the hospital. I lost a good friend that I wasn't able to say goodbye to because I couldn't even go see him. And so we have all these precautions, and I guess my question is, we've got certain people pushing the precautions very heavily. And we have other people, Commissioner Morris, for example, I won't pick on him, he says he's not wearing a mask. That's his choice. And I actually found a mask I could wear finally because with these allergies, I'm getting an echo on about every word I say because they're pretty severe allergies, and they're not very compatible with a mask. And I finally found one I think I could wear okay. But anyhow, my concern is, how far can precautions be pushed before they're more harm, doing more harm than they are good? And I think some thought needs to be put into that. Schools, you have a special challenge, I know you want to protect the kids, but what are we doing to them? I mean, I understand about half the, well, a good portion of the kids are not really doing their work as well as they could be or should be. You have numbers, I think, to show to one degree that's true, but just based on some of the things I'm hearing, some of the kids are not performing at the level they normally would because they're having to do some pretty extreme things. But anyway, I don't know the answer. But I think a lot of it's common sense and reasonableness versus needing. I see people with masks on walking around in a warm, they look like they're scared to death. There's people scared to come out of their house. There's people, Neil, you're not helping, but when I pick up my paper, I about throw it down in the yard. Thirteen deaths in Stokes County, front page, top. Why you want to scare people? Why not talk about the good things, the things that our health department's doing and others are doing to try to do some good and offset this? Don't just try to scare people. And usually when I pick up a paper and it says COVID, that's about as far as I read. And so we do have a challenge. The nineteen eighteen Spanish flu was a very, very serious situation. It was wiping out whole families. The percentage of deaths from the COVID still are very, very small. Now, when those family members affected or, you know, I don't want the stuff, and I don't want anybody else to have it. But you look at the actual percentages versus the general population, minuscule. I mean, fractional. Now that, if you've got it and you die from it, the percentage is a hundred percent, which is not good. But I guess what I'm trying to say, and I wish I were smarter and could use my words better, is where is the common sense? That's what I'm looking for in how we deal with this situation. Common sense and reasonableness. People are emotional illness, drug use, mental illness. What do you call it when people fuss with each other too much? They get in each other's face and abuse is up, family abuse, spouse abuse, those types of things, the numbers are up. So there's a lot of collateral damage being caused by these precautions. I don't want to add to that. I'd like to see a lot of thought put into whatever steps are taken. Commissioner Morris, is that what you were saying also? That we don't just pull the trigger too quick and make snap judgments? And we take a very calm, rational approach to how we're dealing with this? Who knows how long this is going to last? I heard a significant political figure say that he could easily see masks and all these precautions going into twenty-twenty-two. What's our country going to be like then? What's our economy going to be like? And we've had pandemics before, swine flu, bird flu, SARS. God help us that we don't get something else like the Spanish flu. But we've had a lot of pandemics. But I'm seventy-six years old, and I've never seen anything close to what's happening now in this country. How much of our country is going to be left when this is over like we want it to be or we've enjoyed for many, many years up to this? And I don't know the answers. If somebody can come up with things that are reasonable and I can look at and say, "That makes sense," I'll support them. But if it goes beyond reasonableness and beyond what makes good common sense, I'll have questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Didn't mean to get on a soapbox, but it's kind of a.
He's on a roll right there. I thought I was going to put you back down in your chair, I thought he was going to jump up, man.
At least it didn't pound on the table.
That's right. Need to put the three Ws out in front of. I don't know what I want to say about this. You guys are here every day, whatever y'all feel safe of doing, just as long as production can get behind. I think that's the main thing, and people are still taken care of, and it's being done in a safe manner. I do want to touch on something that you was talking about, the emergency alert thing that went out. Is it safe to say there's not a single commissioner on this board that knew anything about it before it went out? Because I know I didn't.
I didn't. I got this call from Danbury, and somebody's, Dale, I think, starts talking.
Well, that was one. There was also another one, like Amber Alert, does a buzzing noise on your phone like it do like severe weather, goes, you know.
I believe I got that one.
Yeah, it went across a few cell phones, and it come across mine, my son, my wife saw it at one time. So all them phones in the office, it was a loud racket there for a minute, and of course, I was on the phone call, and I got to look down, you know, shrugged my shoulders and went on. So I was kind of surprised to see that come across the emergency alert thing. I guess that's just one of the things we got that's there. And from what I understand, the state recommends or asked the health department to do so, is that correct?
They asked them to send it out to their citizens. And Brayden Nutrie was actually, that's just me, because I already saw that message from the DHH as they came through, asking them not to go out before holidays.
Yeah.
And Brayden said he actually received it from emergency management that asked them to send it, and he sent it to Tammy, Antedale Hall, and asked them to send it out as a request from the state.
Right.
Just a people reminder before holidays, just to be careful, watch awareness, the rural areas, you know, is exploding with cases.
Right.
So it really wasn't anything that they just were trying to call the issue with, they just were trying to follow what their, as you know.
I guess it's just my generation, I kind of read it, shrugged my shoulders and went on. Of course, I don't ask, hey, what was the deal with that? But anyway, it didn't bother me none. I read on social media, it seemed like it really offended a few people. Matter of fact, I think even read that one guy said when his phone went off, he almost wrecked his truck. I just, me personally, I just kind of, wow. But anyway, as was I, it can't just be the difference in generations, which I think a gentleman was kind of close to my age. But I'm kind of going back to where my comments had began to meet in. Our health department right now are doing all they can do. I just want to say to our citizens, we're all in this together. I mean, we are all in this together. I even had one gentleman called me, said, "Y'all were trying to put fear into the people's minds in Stokes County." I'm telling you right now, there's not one single commissioner sitting from this board that I know of that is trying to put any kind of fear into the citizens' minds, not one. And I couldn't tell you of one employee down at the health department that's trying to do anything. And by all means, Commissioner Morris, I have not argued on this, I'm just trying to tell you.
I understand where you're coming from.
So with it, they received complaints, and I could see if our, if our employers were sitting down there and not doing a job, kind of sitting around kicking a can, twiddling the thumbs, playing on the phone. I've made several trips in there myself. That's not happening. You know, now's the time for us to kind of come together. You know, we're a small rural county. God has blessed us in many ways. God has blessed us in many ways. And I will say that, you know, State's County, there's good people here. It's time to come together and work together. Not fuss and argue over any little thing that offends you, and especially something as small as a emergency alert system. Like I said, it did not bother me. I did not wreck my truck. I did not smack nobody when it went off. It's something that happens, comes across your TV. When they test it, it's going to interrupt your TV program. That upsets me sometimes when Jeopardy's on, but that's all right. We'll get through it. It's okay. But guys, the only thing I want to ask right now on this part, I know this is kind of far-fetched from what we're sitting here talking about, and it's like I said, I kind of look at you guys. Y'all are here every day, we're not, whatever y'all see that kind of fit. But this is one time I am asking all our citizens, please come together as a community. Please come together as a county. Let's not cause any more pandemic in this county than what's already going on in this whole world right now. God's got us, and you got to keep that in mind. Any more questions or comments on this?
Just one comment. This is the emergency alert thing. Before the pandemic came, we had issues with it for, people don't like to get these things unless there's really a need to get them. And so I was really kind of thinking more, you know, if they recommend doing it, then we have people here that should make a judgment on whether it really makes sense for our county or not to do it. If they, if it's mandatory, we send it, then there's no question there.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
But I just say, you know, put some judgment on these things, because we know our people better than anybody else do and how they're going to react to stuff. And also the time of date I get these things can be an issue, too. So I just think that when you're talking to that many people at one time, you got to be really careful what you put out, and it needs to be limited to a pretty small number of people that can approve it, is what we ought to look at. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I have something, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. I'm not taking issue at all with what you were saying about bringing our county together and us joining, working elbow to elbow to try to get through this in whatever way we can. I'm agreeing with you. But you said try to control the pandemic in our county. I agree with that. We need to try to take precautions. But I don't want, I'm going to stick with the main theme. I don't want the precautions to be a major part of the problem as well. Control the pandemic, but use some common sense and reasonableness. And even at times, a matter of personal choice, whether to do this or do that, or is it safe or not, use some common sense along with your tight controls. Because people are, people are really, I don't know how to describe some of the feelings that I'm hearing that people have regarding trying to make it through this. Some people are scared out of their wits, other peoples are acting like it's not even here, and there's a wide bunch, wide extreme in between. But let's control the pandemic, yes, but let's do it in a way that minimizes the harm done by the precautions as well, would be how I would hope we can do. And like you say, I totally agree with you. Let's work together to try to help bring these things to where they need to be.
All right. And I believe this right here was predictive. I can't remember if it was a meeting that was in here, it was a meeting that I was in. I don't know if you guys recall this night, it was back in April. It was said there would be another spike come November. Was y'all in here for that?
I don't recall it, but I've been kind of feeling that way all along. And then things started hitting back to normal, it would go up.
Right. As far as what this right here, was the board's consensus on it?
May I say one more thing, please? I just thought about this. Did our manager approve, Jake, did you approve this message that went out? Well, I would prefer that whatever is done, before it goes out to the public, our manager, it's his responsibility to the day-to-day operation of this county. I would appreciate him at least being aware of it and giving his consensus before somebody pulls the trigger. Would that be a problem in any way?
No.
I agree. That's the way we did it before when I was here.
It seemed to make sense. I mean, he's...
It has to be the county, it needs to be county manager and assistant county manager and probably one other person, maybe, like emergency management. Sometimes they need to send things out that they don't have time to wait.
And I think this, I don't think they meant anything about this one. I think they're just gotten to be commonplace during the state. You can send this information out that way, that they didn't think anything of it when they requested from the state and they just sent it out. Before, when some of the other messages, we looked at them together and done it, but I think this was just, they came across and they didn't think it was a huge deal, so.
I think the ones that let it out also had no R in ten or anything like it behind it. It was just kind of, just kind of put it out there as a reminder for the holidays, yeah. I mean, let me be, I'm the first one to comply. We had a Christmas, a Christmas party, as we give 130 people. So I mean, you know, and we're roomed together, so. Anyway. Consensus on this, y'all?
Can we agree that we do need a certain level of approval, county manager, for example, when possible? And I think Commissioner Morris mentioned the assistant county manager and maybe Neil Hall or Brandon. At least three people.
I like the three person. You know, superintendent, we basically, we agreed that could send out a message to all of the parents. Assistant, wanted to call, who could do it, depending upon what it was. I like the three, which would be to be also the county manager, the assistant county manager, emergency.
And also, if I may please, along with what Commissioner Minnen Hall was saying, if it's an extreme emergency, I would say that could be waived. If the situation required it, then it would be maybe county manager alone, or if he's not available, assistant county manager or EMS director. Generally speaking, the three folks, but in an extreme emergency, wherever second counted, we had to do, we'd need to do what we needed to do.
All right. Now that we agree on that, what's the consensus of the board for this? That's the thing we're supposed to be talking about.
Help me.
About the restrictions on the county offices and stuff, the buildings?
If it's deemed necessary, if something were to happen, the situation comes up, there's a, you know, outbreak in a department, something like that, just consensus for us to act on what we're, we need to act with the information that's in front of you until we can get in touch with you and let you know what's happening.
I would be interested, if I may, if somebody else could go if they want to, but I would be interested in continuing that same process that we just kind of worked through. And if necessary, it'd be the three people that we just suggested that are able to make decisions like that.
Everybody good with that? Yes?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Commissioner Minnen Hall?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll now move on to the action agenda. First, the Wantacove Green Box site location. Have a motion on this? I just want to say, well, I'll wait for discussion. Go ahead.
I would, I would like to not vote on this tonight. I was surprised to see it on the agenda.
Can I say one thing? I've put it on the agenda before because we had talked about putting it back on here for this meeting, and there's supposed to be a decision made by the Wantacove planning board. Last month, they didn't have a forum. This time, it was a two-two vote. I'd already put the agenda out by the time they had their meeting on Thursday night on the morning, so it was already out there.
They disapproved it, right, the planning board?
They did a two-two, they had a two-two vote with one member absent, so they're putting it back on in December. But according to their staff, really what they're approving is the conditional use permit for how the site's used. Their actual staff, which, and I've got some copies I sent home with you tonight just for review for when it comes up again in December, of their own approvals and their staff report, like we do here for planning, with, you know, they were making a recommendation to do it and they were to approve the conditional use. So what, the only thing that didn't happen was they didn't approve the conditional use, so they're not real sure. The town manager was not really exactly sure that that was really correct, as far as how, they really didn't have the, I guess...
They don't have the authority to take that.
...to just say no to that. They only can approve the use, like, when it comes to the four of them. So it was kind of a, it's a little bit of a confusion on that end for them. But it was already on this agenda before that meeting ever took place, so we weren't expecting that to happen, so that's why it's on here.
Commissioner Minnen Hall?
I think it's most all the commissioners here, uh, does, in their job, is they do the due diligence. And I've been down Neil Road twice in the last week. I talked to a young man today in a truck as I was turning around, and I guess he recognized me where I was running for reelection this time, and he said, Commissioner Minnen Hall is going to talk to you in a minute. And I was in my Camry, and he said, are you looking at the green box site, possibly? And I said, I am. That's why I've already been down this road once this week. I wanted to come back one more time because I saw it on the action agenda. You know, of course, usually when you're on the action, you take a vote, or you can table it, or whatever, but, you know, it wasn't under discussion, it wasn't under information, it was under action. So I wanted to go down and take one more look at it. And I will say exactly what that young man told me proved to be true. And I'm not saying how I would vote if it ever gets to us. I don't have the Wantacove planning board will do. However, he said, Mr. Minnen Hall, I've heard about how many accidents have almost been up on 89, with cars almost running into each other. He said, but I asked you to drive up to the end of this road, to the stop sign. He said, just take a look and see if there is a car coming around that curve and how fast it gets on you. So I drove up to the end, which at the end, you know, is where tunnel, or tunnel embalments are, used to be tunnel embalments. And there's a stop sign. And if you come past Wantacove Elementary School, going toward Wantacove, they have put in some storage units there. Been that way lately, there are some storage units that have been put in there. And then you have the building. And as I got to the stop sign, I looked to my right, started to pull out, and there was a vehicle coming around that curve. I'd say it was 55 to 60 miles an hour. I could not get my car out into the highway, or I'd have got hit. How many times that happens in a day? I don't know, because I'm not down that road every day. I know where it is, because I worked at Southeastern Middle School for 18 years, and that was one of my bus route roads. So I know that road very well, but I wanted to go back and check. And when I got to that end and tried to make that left turn, headed back up 89 towards Meadows, if I had not slammed on my brakes, that car, or truck, I can't even remember what it was now, but it was coming so fast, it would have hit me. And I don't feel comfortable at all voting on this tonight after two trips down that road. I just don't feel comfortable in that, and that's all I'm going to say right now.
What's the board's consensus on this? Do I wish to table the vote? Hey, Commissioner Walker?
Definitely. You want to go first?
Who went first last time?
I don't remember. I'll tape it a second, okay? Yeah, the, I've been down there, I went down and visited with the folks that are here tonight, and it, it's really going to have a super negative impact on their property if we use it. So to me, that's, that's a pretty big deal in making a decision like this. There's an oak tree there that's as nice as any I've seen in the county that I would really hate to see taken down, but because of, they basically have kind of a greenway area there that, that goes to their house, and it would, all that would be destroyed if they, if we put the site in there, I think. I'm not laying too favorable toward it. The, I didn't even think about the things that Commissioner Minnen Hall just mentioned, but it kind of makes sense what he said. If we, if we're not fixing our safety issue, then that's another reason probably not to do it. I'm a little confused on the, on who has to approve it in Wantacove. It goes back to the planning board and then to the commissioners down there have to approve it, too.
Yeah, so I brought some information, and we may not need it, but I brought it in case you want to take it with you and look at it. So basically, like on their staff report, Arizona administrator recommended it for approval, and the manager signed off on that, and then it went to the planning and zoning board for approval and for conditional use for a public operations facility. And they just, like I said, didn't vote on it last time, this time did, did a two-two vote, but it was sort of unclear what they were voting on exactly. They, they didn't, they, their reasoning, they didn't really have a reason for not doing the conditions, so they're a little bit confused themselves on what exactly they were voting for or not voting for. But we'll go back to them in December for the same conditional use per, you know, permit, like we do here for planning zone. We'll go back to them in December for that, and at that time, they'll go down again with all their members, I'm not sure. But if, but if our board is not interested in moving forward with that site, it's something that we can have them completely take off of their, their agenda and not even look, look into it anymore. We wanted to start to look at, we've looked at lots of sites in Wantacove, and so far, that one was the most feasible as far as from the architect's standpoint, engineer as far as being able to make it usable for it. Not as much money as the other site, which was like $750,000 or something astronomical like that to fix the existing site, and we're kind of landlocked there. So, but, you know, if this board really is, you know, like you were saying, you looked at about the traffic problem and things like that, so, you know, we can certainly put it off till this planning board looks at it again at kind of Wantacove, or if this board wants us to start looking for other options, we can start doing that, too.
I went at it from the safety issue. Commissioner Morris was looking at it from the environmental and verification issue, and they're both the issues to met. A gentleman I talked to today here, it looks like he was about 30, 35 years old, lived in a house on the left there, and I'm going down to take a good look at it, and he's waiting on me coming back up. He said, aren't you Commissioner Minnen Hall? I said, I am. He said, I just want you to go up and say, you know, go up that stop sign and see if you can get out into the highway safely. He said, you might be lucky, and there might not be anybody coming, but, he said, they can come around that curve 50 to 60 miles an hour, they're on top of it. What happened was exactly what we said. And, you know, the last thing he told me was, he said, Commissioner Minnen Hall, I know that this is an important vote for y'all, but he said, everybody on our road is not going to... He said, all the, and I know it's not a lot, I mean, you know, I rode to the ends of the road, and there's not many hours down there, but he said, no one on that road is going to hear us about. That's where I, I have a little hesitation right now at this point, not only the environmental part, but, you know, the whole beginning of this, if y'all remember, was we brought it up as a safety issue, that people were coming from both ends of 89 and trying to pull out of the green box site, and were almost getting hit. So are we just transferring one safety danger to another safety danger? I don't know it. I'll tell you one thing, I'd hate to know I was in a truck with a trailer pulled, that I pulled down there and dumped it into the side, and then had to get back out on the main highway with the traffic coming at that speed, because I don't see how that's going to be any safer than where we're at.
So I'm here from...
This is my, this is my opinion.
I'm here from two commissioners, or is it y'all that you don't want to go through or you want to push it off right now?
I'd say go look for another site, personally. I really don't like it.
Commissioner Walker?
What I've seen so far.
I'm interested in this site, but I do have strong reservations. I can sort of empathize with the folks that are here this evening and continue to present their concerns, see exactly where they're coming from, I believe. I see, I'm aware of the safety issues with where the site is currently located, and I definitely feel like we need to do something. And I work well with information. I will be involved more likely if an actual decision is made on this, but if I were, here's something I'd be looking for. What other sites are we strongly considering? What other sites have we strongly considered? Oh, hang on a second. I know that there has been some research. I know there are other sites that would work just as well, maybe better if we could just find them. So my position is, if you'll allow me to state it, is I think, yes, something needs to be done, but I think there needs to be more research and study put into it before we act on it, before the board acts on it. I'm very interested in the information Commissioner Menin Hall shared with us, the safety concerns. I'm interested in the impact it would have on the neighborhood, just, not just the folks who are here with us this evening, but others who live who would be affected as well. If we ever did have to go with this site, for whatever reason or combination of reasons, I would at least want a lot of, at least some more effort put toward looking at other options. And I think if we look hard enough and look in the right way, can follow down the path, so to speak, we may find a site that doesn't have some of the downside that this site has. And so, Mr. Chairman, my position is that I'd like, and I think I've heard this from a couple of other commissioners, I don't believe Commissioner Langford has had a chance yet to express his position, state his position, but I'd like to see more time and study be put into this before we get to the point where we're ready to act on it.
Okay. Thank you, Senator.
That is my, I agree 100%. There's, there's some off roads close to this that could be put on it and wouldn't be traveling there as much. And I think we ought to do a check and see if we can't find another location for that green box site.
I'll have your consensus from the board to go ahead and put in a little more time and see if you can find some more sites for this to possibly go.
Like I said, I was just going back, we put it on action in October, and then it got put off by Wanaco, and it got put off again, and so I was just going to try to get it back here for a vote, and then they put it off again there. So if we can just table it for now, I guess.
Put it on an action.
Is that okay?
Are we going to call, we going to call Wanaco off? I mean, tell him not to do anything until they hear from us? If you tabled it, could you tell Wanaco not to take any further action until they hear from us? I mean, would that be one approach?
Yeah, we haven't, and we have not, because we're waiting for the decision. We haven't recorded the date yet where this was transferred to the, to the county from the Board of Education. So that has that reversion clause, that if we're not going to use it, it would go back, that we haven't recorded it yet. Because I think to do it until we need. So we can, I can let them know if you want to table it, or if you just know you don't want to use this site, we can just vote no to it, and then we can just keep it, I can let them know and not put it back on their agenda.
Be my preference, just say no to it.
I think we ought to table it and find another location. At least try to find another location.
I agree with Mr. Langford. If we're going to table it, I think we should ask our staff to continue looking for another suitable location or locations.
Commissioner Menin Hall, voter table? I don't want to table it.
I'm going to table.
Okay. That's majority board, just table it.
I know, like Commissioner Langford was saying, he knew some locations. I would love to know some locations that you know, because we have looked and tried and tried to find land and all kinds of things. So if you have some input from some areas that you might know about, we would welcome that. And we start to look again.
Sounds good. Let's go move on to item B, the hazard essential bonus pay. Have a motion on this.
What'd you say, Mr. Chairman?
The hazard essential slash bonus pay.
This was discussed at the November 9th meeting, moved to the 16th, and then we didn't get to it at the budget meeting, so it came back to here.
If I may, real quick, with the stuff that is going to be approved from the COVID money, does this affect this in any way?
No, I mean, there's, like, sitting right, right now, before the approval for the fire marshal tonight and before the fire department, there was about, there was 423 there. If I took out the money for the fire department, so it was like 412 something, and then Scott's approval of the fire marshal, so it's something about 407. So that's what's sitting there now is about, right around 400 a little bit, give or take. So this, this would affect that. If you approved the hazard pay portion of it only, the 330, 3660 with the fringes and everything, and those can be two separate things. You could approve just the hazard pay, and there's two, you have some budget amendments for both scenarios.
And me personally, just my opinion on it, I'd kind of like to see it tabled for right now, too, since we got just a couple more meetings, just make sure nothing else pops up that we absolutely need to spend this money on instead of taking it out of the budget. That's just my opinion. How's the rest of the board feel?
I agree with that.
And we, if it's okay with you, and so we don't like to make up officials, bring it back, we just put it on maybe the December 14th meeting. That would be, because that way you would know by then, would it come up probably, and you'd be looking towards the end of December to approve anything.
That's what I mean.
Can I, can I ask, how much, how much money do we still have in the COVID, the cure is at?
Around 400.
400,000?
With, including what's been approved here tonight.
So we still are, after tonight's meeting, we have 400,000?
Yep.
December 14th. Like you say, would be plenty of time to.
Make sure we ain't gotten them now, too.
And have all our pieces fit together the best way we could.
Everybody's good with that?
It's time you think about it a little bit. One thing I would, only comment I would make is I did check with a couple of other counties, and they are using COVID money to pay hazard pay. I was just curious if other counties were doing it. They are. So that's one element of this, and the others, the bonuses that come out of the general fund. So I think we, I would have to discuss those separately.
Right. All right.
14's good.
So December 14th, okay? Back to, back to action, is that okay? Or do you want to revert it back to, because we have to, your meeting after December 14th, or maybe December 28th, and then we can cut that very close on, if we decided, I'd say we have to.
I'd like to see it on discussion. That way, if we separate it, too, I'm going to come out of the general fund and then what's left of the COVID money, and that would still give us another meeting to take action on it.
What I'm saying is we need to take action on the 14th, because we have to have time to get the checks out and cut, because your next meeting is not until December 28th.
Okay.
That doesn't give us any time.
I guess I ain't got no choice then but to leave it on the action agenda then.
Yeah.
It is action agenda, yeah.
All right. Move on to item C, demolition of county-owned property.
On that one, we're just going to wait to the next budget cycle, make a decision on that.
We made a decision, we waited to see what the budget review brought us last week. And honestly, what I'm seeing on it, like Commissioner Morris had said earlier, it's actually kind of down, even though our sales tax is still on board, the fund balance, I think, is kind of down. I'd kind of like to maybe see, maybe wait until budget time again to putting this back on.
On the demolition of county property? I'm kind of good with it. And what, the only question I have on the proposals we had for the demo, how long are they good for?
I think, I know that we checked with those, and they were good at least through the, we checked because we're going to do it November 16th, and we let them know that, and they said it would be good at least until the end of the month or the end of December. So if so, we'd have to get new quotes, because if we're going to talk about it during budget season, those would only be good for.
Okay.
Yep, to the end of, at least at the end of the year, and no later than that.
That's the one that we had 11 proposals on, correct? And the lowest proposal was 110,000. The highest proposal was 303,000. Is that, is that correct?
It is.
Yeah.
So we've got a diff, I, I still have to, all the proposals and the school system I went through as the principal and superintendent, I tell you, that, that throws me just a, I'm sorry, but I'm getting a red flag right there. You, you telling me that they are all giving you the exact same apples and oranges? And lowest proposal for options one and two was 110,000? You tell me that proposal 11 is option one and two, and they are asking for 303,000?
They don't want it.
Well, and, and you had a lot in the 200s then.
Um, yeah, one, one 200, 206, yeah, 225, there were two in the 200s. What I'm being told about the people that took these bids, you know, we didn't have this budgeted, so their names aren't out here as far as the companies that bid on it, is that the lower bidders are companies that do a lot of demo and have all the equipment, and it just is not a big job for them, like it would be some of these other companies that bid smaller companies, would have to rent equipment, additional, you know, things like that. That's, that's the reasoning.
That's a good explanation, man.
Yeah.
Hey, I just, you know, we don't want to make so much 200,000 difference. I just sort of, but that's a good explanation.
Thank you.
One thing.
I think this is the county manager.
Commissioner Morse?
I think I would like to wait till the budget cycle, and then maybe have Will or somebody bring a plan, some kind of a plan for what we're going to do with the property. It might help us decide how we want to go about doing this.
And I think it's a good piece of property that's actually going to go pretty quick for any kind of business. I mean, it's prime. But I do share the same concern as you. I mean, if I put in a GORB bid, and there's a big difference like that, of course, they always scratch their head, and my biggest thing is, they're going to get into some environmental issues with moving dirt. So did everybody include their environmental stuff? Because if not, who gets in trouble with that? Is it the county? Is it the contractor? And if it's a contractor, the county can still be written over for something like this, and it's, when it comes to environmental, I'm sure y'all dealt with them before, it's not no small issue. Yeah, big time money.
Scratch.
Yeah. So I'm good with.
I have to be honest, I, I didn't want to come out. You know, this is one of those informal bids, but we don't know who bid what. We have no idea who the lowest bidder was or the highest bidder was. We don't know.
Right. And one building?
Well, it's this proposal one through proposal 11, and there's almost 200,000 difference than to me. One thing that sticks out in my mind that we're going to get in trouble with here if we're not careful, is we're going to get some additional charges down the line from that 110,000 bid. And it's probably going to be environmental, and that's the kind that's going to stick you right there, and then we're going to be in trouble.
And I think there was one building that I seen in the original proposal that was left out. So if that's the case, what kind of supplemental agreement are we looking at? Somebody comes in and socks it to us and says, well, 125,000, but little building, then, yeah, we didn't get very far. So, so everybody's good with pushing it off for now?
Yeah, plus we'll know more about budget than about funds we have available then, too, so.
All right. Move on to item D, employee Christmas bonus information and budget amendment number 41.
Oh, hey, you have a new sheet. I had added part-time, the permanent, the part-timers that have a set schedule, which is how we paid it last time in 1213. I had accidentally added it twice, so the cost was only 188,218. I want to make that correction to four, I think it was 205 the other time, the other sheet. And this is, as you see, if somebody's been employed different times, they get different amounts. Part-timers have a set schedule, that means, like, the green box site workers, they work a set schedule. These are them part-timers that are getting, and you can see how much they're getting a lesser amount, and it's based on when they were hired also. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. I have one question.
I think about what way we did it in 1213. I pulled the sheet, and they went.
Okay, one employee's asked me about something, and so I want to clarify that. We had a discussion about part-timers that, one category of part-timers, that some may have worked and some may have not worked at all. But I'm told, I was told that some of those people in that category have worked a ton of hours. So, so the question was, should they get something if they're working, say, more than a full-time person even? And so, but, and it kind of seems like they should, but then, so how would we quantify that? Was set a base number of hours that you had to do in order to get that, or what?
We have 202 on the, on the list. 30, 67 were getting a bonus. There are 34 of those that have no hours at all. There's 101 that does, and some have eight hours, some have thousands some of them. So, you know, that would be a decision that the board, you could still approve this budget amendment, pay it, and then I would bring another one if you just, but we could still go ahead and write the check.
That'd be good, but I think we ought to check it.
It depends on the board how they want to do it. I mean, I was just more by how we did it the other.
Those people that got 1,000 hours, it seems to me like they ought to get something if they, no matter what.
Did you go by, but what was the last time that you did a bonus, figured about 2014?
Well, 13.
13, yeah.
We did a bonus, and we did it like this right here. We didn't do anybody, we didn't do part-timers that worked so many hours.
Y'all bring us a recommendation then on that group that we weren't going to pay that may have worked a lot of hours and do that separate?
What I did, I wrote the schedule, how many hours anybody from January the 1st, what this bonus is based on, till now, last payroll. And I had how many hours they worked. Like I said, I've got some that worked three hours, and what that is, they went to training for EMS, so I'll just go ahead and tell you what that was. And they get paid for those three hours. And then I had some that's worked up to 1,000 some hours. Just, just whatever the board wants.
Yeah, but we, we'd like a recommendation from you guys on, I think.
Do you have a number of hours that you're interested in?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of looking at it, what's the minimum hours, like, your temporary employees with a fixed schedule? What would the minimum hour be on something like that for one of those employees? Maybe take that number, whatever that is, and use it, the employees without fixed schedules, and use that to do your bonus employees to do that?
I can't look that up.
I can see it kind of being fair in a way.
Workers or ones that just jumped in my mind, they work from 600 to 700, over 775 hours.
Okay, so you want them to use like, like, 600 as a number, and either ones have a set part-time schedule?
That's just a set that I know have a set schedule.
Right.
Maybe you could pick two or three different area of amounts and tell us how much each one costs. Recommend them, something like what you just said, and how much that costs.
All right.
I'll give you a 300 hour, 400 hour, 500 hour.
That'd be fine. That'd be something for us to discuss. But as far as one we have now, do I have a motion on it?
I should approve.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
I should approve.
I was looking at the sheet.
I'll second it.
All right. Any more discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vows? All right.
500, 900, 3, 4, and 5. 3, 4, 5, on that.
All right.
We won't do them the same ratio as the ones that have a permanent, permanent schedule.
This, this would be.
Yeah, probably.
At least have, have worked at meeting about.
Right. Yeah, if you just tell the ones that worked at minimum 300 or more, 400 or more, that gives an idea how many more, what we're looking at. All right, item E, the State's County Schools, five-year facility plan.
I should approve. I'll second.
Who wants that one?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Shannon, can you?
Can I have one question?
Yes.
On this bonus that we're working through for, if we can get it ready, can I bring it back to the research meeting? I think we can get those checks out to those folks before Christmas.
Sure.
I can't get it written, because we have payroll fees for.
Okay.
If we did it on the, on that date, then we can.
Do it on Thursday.
Yeah. Is that, is that okay?
All right, Shannon, can you read rationale for us, please?
Yeah, on this, on this, are we doing the $250 for the temporary part-time people?
Well, we can discuss it whenever you bring it back to us. It might be.
I think, I think, are you doing 250 for the six schedule part-time? But I would just do it the same, figure 300, 500, that would, yeah, so that was easier for numbers.
Shannon, can you read rationale for closed session for us, please?
Do you consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any officer position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners or any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of. of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners or of some other public body pursuant to general statute 143-318.1186?
Do I have a motion, go on to close?
Make a motion, we'll go on to close.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Get closed.
Thank you all.